Okay, folks, we'll get started. Thank you all for coming tonight. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:32. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is standing in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Kelly will get you in now. You want to, too? Do you want to step up here?
All right. Come on, Steve.
Yeah, quicker.
All right.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
There you go.
Which was the hot seat.
There you go. There you go.
Good one.
We may have a couple of guests who are joining us, but we'll get started. I'll turn the mic over to you, too.
Well, for those of you who haven't met Tim, this is Tim Paddock. He is the manager at the Weldon Theater. He's doing a fantastic job. Tim has made some great changes, has great film knowledge, a whole boatload of common sense, so, yeah, well, let...
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's great working over there. I've had a couple small businesses and come out of a movie-making background or a film-making area. And it's such a neat old theater, and it's so cool. The city bought it, and a lot, I mean, really, all I've been doing is building on the stuff that Weldon has already done in terms of making improvements and keeping things going. There are a lot of technical issues we're in the midst of addressing, a lot of stuff that needs to be done, but we're sort of prioritizing that and making progress along that as we can. Have to be somewhat pragmatic with technologies expensive. And, but, no, we've done a lot of great stuff. We've started staggering the movies, things along those out to be able to get people in them out of concessions more quickly. Done a lot of partnerships with Vermont Screen or Vermont Filmmakers, so sometimes those make good money, sometimes they don't, but, you know, I think it's an important part of, you know, what the theater should be doing. We have, you know, also local schools do screenings and stuff like that, so it's been going really great, and I've got a great staff over there, and just happy to be part of the team.
Sarah, you had, I think, in our financial report, the month of December, January was above projected?
Absolutely. In the financial report at the end of December, the theater is doing very well with revenues coming in at $197,000 and expenses just shy of $170,000, yeah, so $167,000, so it's pushing, I don't know if that math tracks, my notes are here, but it's almost a $30,000 surplus at the end of the second quarter. We've had some repair invoices since then that's narrowed the spread, but things are looking great compared to where we thought they would when we did the budget in '25.
Yeah, adding on that, I think, from Oviedo, too, we had our biggest day by 40% that I was able to find, so, there's definitely an appetite. I think what we're finding, or what Kelly already found, but what I'm finding is that, I think when I stepped into the role, I thought it was going to be like, which movie we play first, Taxi Driver or Gene Streets? But the reality is, you know, the most valuable thing the theater has is the privilege of showing Disney and Marvel movies and things like that, and so if we use that as a baseline and we can get people back in the theater and, you know, build on that, and then that gives us the, gives us the leeway and the bandwidth to start, you know, this is a more interesting fair and tailor other content to other folks in the community, so it's been, it's been great. I mean, it's been a good time for movies this fall.
Did I hear you say that you had a 40% increase in a single day?
It was, not one say it was an increase, it was 40% busier day than the other days.
Ever, yeah.
What was the reason for that?
Oviedo.
There was a reason for Oviedo, so, I wish I could say it was we ran something that not pays for, or something, but, no, it was really that movie, it was, but I do think that shows there is an appetite. There is an appetite still for movies.
And what special event have you done?
Well, we've done, let's see, we did a screening of a movie called The Farm Boy with...
I heard about that.
Yeah, that was a week or two ago. I had the filmmaker, filmmaker come in and speak, and so that was actually a big success. The historical stuff plays really well, especially to some of the older folks in the area. And then a week previous, we had a Vermont filmmaker from Columbia come in and show us a horror comedy, New Yorkie Werewolf, and, you know, so it's just a little bit of everything. You know, we try to, we try to work with, you know, we have all these chairs, we have these screens, you know, it's a shame to let them go unused, so, you know, we try to figure out a way to make it work for everybody.
And that the Raleigh movie was huge.
Oh, yeah. Home of Raleigh was huge. That was a huge success. And we did four screens. Two screens with the filmmaker, and then one with M V U, and then we did another just because there was such demand, and so, and even like with The Farm Boy, you know, we talked to him about getting his old movie in, and we hang on to his digital cinema package so that's something we could, you know, revisit again in a few months, three, six months or something like that, so.
Tim's also had conversations with community members who are very, very specific interests, and he's, you know, things, things have settled down to a point when that's an option, and he's been meeting with people who have ideas for, you know, very specific film, films, film festivals, all, you know, that kind of thing, too.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's been, that's been good, actually. Talking about Franklin kind of film club, I'll do something in March, and get a few things in the hopper. Of course, you know, everybody has their own specific taste in programming, which, you know, which can be hard to accommodate, but I do think there is bandwidth to do more. We just have to do it in a way such that it doesn't add a lot of overhead to the theater, right? So, you know, that's what we're doing, maybe a little differently maybe than we might have done before.
I think the, to hear it, the teachers, I work in Milton, so they did some field trips up there, and the kids loved it, the families thought it was a great event, the teachers really enjoyed it, and that was a great kind of welcoming, that whole event. And I also want to say, I think the social media has been great. It's like, I'm just checking, it's like five to six posts in the last two weeks is a good number to really kind of get in, because I never saw the Weldon appear in my feed for the city took over. They post, but it's so rare that it wouldn't get that generation, so as a market perspective, that's great to see that kind of like getting out there more, so.
Yeah, no, that's been great, and we are working on updating our website. Our website isn't really, I mean, it's not really fit for Oval, or it wasn't when I stepped in, and that's how most people, so, working on overhauling that right now, so it's a little more dynamic, a little less manual, and we're trying to make a lot of things a little less manual.
Responsive design, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Does anyone have any questions, Brian?
Yeah, a couple of years ago, I think it was a couple, a couple of years ago, the Weldon ran a special like on a Wednesday afternoon for, mostly for seniors, it was about Tom Brady, Brady's 80 or something like that.
Oh, yeah, 80s for Brady.
And the theater was packed, me and four friends, it just was a fun afternoon, and I just wondered, is that something that you might consider at some time or another again?
Yeah, no, that's something actually we're, we're talking about, we're trying to figure out how to do it. If I knew the theater were going to be packed, then it is a no-brainer.
Yeah, sure.
The hard thing is when it's seven or eight, and then you brought in three people and added another cleaning shift, and, you know, to, like, Criterion, we need to license a movie from Criterion, the show, it costs $300 to $1,200, you know, so you've got to be able to cover that cost, but, yeah, 100%, we are working on that, and I want to get like a wayback Wednesday, a throwback Thursday.
Yeah.
Well, they also used to have the $2 offer, though, it was, Tuesday to Mondays, they used to do like the discounted price, you know, for like the one showing, it was a hit from nice, it was for the theater, it was costly, but concessions, obviously, is where we're trying to make the most, so.
Yeah, I think it was $6 or something in the afternoon, and we had a blast, and it was, well, so I don't know whether you call it a senior day or whatever, but anyway, it was, it was kind of fun.
No, I would love to do more things like that. We need to do more stuff.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Sam and Kelly? One last question, Tim, what's your all-time favorite movie?
My all-time favorite movie? Am I going to make enemies here?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna see if we continue your contrast.
Well, I'm gonna have to go with Goodfellas.
Oh, there it is.
I guess we're safe.
We can look it up.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming here, appreciate it.
Hey, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good news.
Thank you both. Have a good evening.
You too, you too.
And I failed, I failed the general public, I skipped over public comments, so, does anyone would like to make public comments? We have Alon, anyone else? Here we go, we will move on from public comment, and we'll move up to development agreement for the form of our Fonda site. Let's give Mr. Cloud.
I'd ask Brett to join me at table and sort of tag team this.
Brett, you will have public comment, then.
So, I mean, I'll just say a little bit of context before Brett can describe the projects and the buildings that he envisaged for the site, but this has been off a long time coming. The city actually bought this property before I became city manager 16 years ago, and the city gets asked to speak to other communities about St. Albans redevelopment model, and we often say things like, you have to use your strengths as a community to participate in the marketplace, to ensure that the projects that the community envisions actually get built. Planning and regulation only goes so far, it assumes that the market can provide what you envision, but if it can't, you need to participate in it, and nowhere is that more true than the Fonda redevelopment project. If the city hadn't bought that project 16 years ago, it would probably look a lot like today, it would look a lot like it did then, and to open your packet, you know, there's a brief history, there's some slides that Chippewa together for a conference he spoke at over in Maine, and that just shows you the uniqueness of this approach, but it would look a lot like the buildings that are still there, I think. So, the city's used a million in tax increment financing to get this far, but that was really just a drop in the bucket. You know, we've had a lot of help from other levels of government, there's about $5 million in state, federal, and local spending to get this far, but if you look at the page on the back here, and I put the five acre aside, we've got $5 million in public money to get this far, that's a million acre, right? But then, we're at that, $5 million in public spending is able to attract substantial sums of private investment, and so when you add it all up with all this occurred over there so far, we're at 23 million. Brett's gonna do another 20, so all in, that five-acre site is going to see $40 million of economic activity and investment, and it doesn't happen without the city stepping up and spending $300,000 16 years ago, and we can amortize that investment over the life of the community, so, you know, the folks that were on the council at the time, are you on them, Tim?
When the city bought, when it sold its own.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, none of us were here when they bought it, but it's finally starting to return on investment, so it's a great decade. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brett to tell you about the buildings and the project.
Yeah, there's been some, I think very much, obviously, this is, like I said, as far as Dominic has talked about this, I mean, I've only been involved with it for, obviously, a much shorter amount of time, but obviously, over the course of the last six months now, kind of got a feeling of the investment basically the city has in the site, but that's only a piece of it. Obviously, you guys have made a huge commitment just to revitalization of downtown over the years, and it's really, it's kind of a need to see, I mean, I don't get up here that often, but, but the times that we are up here, you've seen the change over the years, which is, which is really neat, because it's just a commitment that you guys have made to the community, and there's a huge payback to that over time, which I think we've seen. This opportunity obviously came along, started back in July with, basically submitted a general RFP at the time, and it was kind of, the way I looked into it, it was kind of like a neat opportunity to really kind of take direct involvement with an area that I, you know, really had seen the changes happening, but had not been really part of. My, my limited experience or development experience up here was out in a project out on 104, a later drive, a re-lean, I basically built some of the condos that were, that were out there, and this was back, I remember talking 20 years ago, so it was a while, but, you know, really what's happening here, and Dominic alluded to this, is that the, the public-private partnership that's kind of going on here right now is so critical to really make any of, any of this stuff really happen. It's really difficult right now to really develop any housing in Vermont, and it's only gotten more difficult just because since COVID, the expenses have gone through the roof, and it's kind of double whammy, and now we're also seeing interest rates are not really cooperating very much, so, so really, what the city has gone and done is they've kind of tackled a couple of those obstacles. One is obviously you guys are making a direct involvement in the land, in the purchase of land, which Dominic was alluding to, and then obviously, I'm sure you're aware that the state is, through the work of, of the city, the state is committed to the legislature, you know, almost a year ago approved a bunch of low-interest rate funding for housing throughout the state, and the city was able to secure a bunch of that, so that, so really, the project really doesn't, this doesn't happen unless you basically have both of those aspects of it, because at 6% interest rates and the cost of construction, most projects right now are not gold or are really dead in the water unless developers are able to really commit a huge amount of equity, of their own equity in these projects, and there's not a lot of developers in Vermont that really are willing to make that commitment. So, so we, you know, we got involved here, which is great, and I'm extremely happy that, you know, that I was chosen for this project, and had been working with, with Dominic and the city here to try to find a, a project that the city can be happy of, but also still works economically, and I think that's what is in front of you with the pictures that we presented. We originally had some discussions about a single building, and really, when we started to take a look at that, we felt that it didn't really fit that well, it was very, it really wasn't a cost-effective building, it was kind of monolithic, it was really, really, really big, and I didn't really think that it fit that well for the site, and so what we had done, what we were showing you tonight, is what I think is a great, a great, I don't say compromise, but a great idea for the site, which is, you know, it breaks it up a little bit, there's two buildings there, four stories, we've added, you know, the architectural, there's some, you know, masonry stone detail outside, individual decks for all units, obviously, you're aware that being a brownfield site, there's limitations in regards, you really can't go down, because there is contamination roughly to six feet down, six and a half feet down, so you are limited in regards to total parking. The city has recently made some modifications in regards to the requirements in regards of parking, which we've, the state has found over time, you know, the old parking regulations and the rules really don't apply to today's, you know, today's development world, so you guys have made some changes on that, but, you know, what, what you're seeing here is, you know, a building that I'm familiar with, and I think it's a, it's a great-looking building to add to, to the area. It's a combination of all one and two bedroom units, roughly split 50/50, so the first building is slightly, the first building that we hope to begin construction on by June is 40 units, and then the second building would be 47, for a total of 87 units is what the property is currently going for.
You mentioned, I think you wanted the earlier pieces of information we got, we had projections for Studio 1, 2, and 3, that's changed.
Yeah, that's changed, and so now we're basically, it's going to be just, it's going to be almost a, I think the first building might have a couple studios in it, but it's pretty much just going to be, it's a one-bedroom and two-bedroom, two-bedroom units, and, you know, as the city was, you know, the whole purpose of this is really, you know, this, this city talked, this, not the city, throughout the state of Vermont, they're all talking about building more and more and more housing. Well, typically, when we get into these situations where, and I think you guys have, this has happened up here, is that you end up finding that the only way, without the equity injections that I was kind of alluding to in regards to, for private development, most of the housing construction that's going on in the state is a lot of, which is great, and there's a, there's a place for this, but a lot of the development that's happening is, is tax credit housing, which is, there's certainly a need for it, but the problem is, is just a need for housing in general, and what, what people lose fact, lose sight on is that there's a huge group of people in the area that can't qualify for that, it's, you know, because with the tax credits, there is a maximum income that people have to meet. There's a lot of jobs throughout the state, including St. Albans here, whether it be the hospital, whether it be, you know, where you have Mylan, where you have Beta is now basically, you know, coming to the area. Those people typically, their income's too high to qualify for that type of housing, so there is a huge need for just, you know, the catchphrase is workforce housing, but it's, it's just market rate housing, and we need more everywhere, so.
On these, this style of building, is that something you've done before?
Yes, it is.
So it's a very familiar layout one?
Yes, correct, correct. Yeah, and that, that's really part of the transition to this, what we're proposing here for this, is that I am familiar with this building, we have done a, we've done this building, three-story version of it, but essentially, the construction is the same. We've done this in Williston, I've done it, I own a, I own a building in Williston, very similar to this, I own a building in Middlebury, very similar to this, the only difference is we've gone four stories here, whereas the other ones were three, and that was only, those were only three because that was the, that was the limitation on height, whereas we don't have that here.
Anyone have any questions?
So, Mr. Kevoski, could you explain to me your definition of market rate?
They classify market rate housing as anywhere between 80 to 120% median income.
For what area?
For, for the area that you're dealing with right now, they classify this area, it's basically Chittenden and Franklin County are basically using the same HUD, it's, it's a, it's a national standard, it's a, it's a standard that is, is calculated by HUD, Housing and Urban Development.
So it's a market rate housing for Franklin County and Chittenden County?
Yes.
And I think we had some concerns on, on the council when this proposal first came before us regarding this type of project, bringing in sleepers. You know what I mean by sleeper?
I think so.
Okay. Bedroom community type, right?
Yeah.
So, someone who comes here, uses the housing, and then heads to Chittenden County to go to work, okay? That's my definition of it. Is that yours, is that your understanding, too?
Well, you know, it's, you know, what I, I look at it, I mean, obviously, you guys, you know, as a city council, you're, you're, part of your concerns are socio-economic type stuff that, that, what you're, you're alluding to right now.
Okay.
I, I feel that, you know, my, my, my goal, and I think the goal of, of this RFP and this program here is to, you know, as you're, you're alluding to sleeper housing, whether somebody is, I think right now, you just need housing in general, and I think you need more people living in this area, and I, and I think, I think the more housing that is created here, you're potential, you're going to attract more businesses, and therefore you're going to have less of the sleeper housing that you're alluding to, because it's, it's kind of a catch-22 with a lot of this, right? Businesses don't want to come to the area until there's affordable housing for their employees, and then, but then, people don't want to work for those businesses unless they can find a place close to live, so I think what happens is over time, if you're able to create more housing in your area here, you're going to reap, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to obtain more of equilibrium, where businesses are going to want to come here, more people are going to want to come here, and they're all going to kind of meet in, in the middle.
I'll ask you two more questions, and I'll be quiet. So we are in favor of projects like, well, I am in favor of projects like this, provided they give our community the opportunity. If you are establishing market rate based on Chittenden County rates, I'm wondering how that gives our community the opportunity to utilize the benefits that you're receiving from the city? That's my first question. I'll let you answer that, but I'll ask the second one.
So, you're, you know, I'm, you know, my goal, my goal is to create housing, okay? And, and so, the...
I'm not trying to be against you.
No, not...
I'm trying to explain it to everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I think there's a gigantic need here for people who want to live in St. Albans, but they don't have any choices. I mean, I, I think that's, I, it's, I think it's that simple. I think this is going to provide more opportunity for people that are potentially already living here. If you go look at your housing stock in St. Albans, and, and call it workforce housing, call it market rate housing, call it, call it whatever terminology you want, I think the limit, I think it's extremely limited, it really, really is. You know, I did a project, so, I alluded to a project similar to this in, down in Middlebury, and nothing new had been built technically market rate in Middlebury in 20 years, and, and really what it did was, and I, I was told this, is that we were permitting this project that we were going to draw more and more, we were going to draw more people into the village that wanted to live in the village of Middlebury, that they had no opportunity, they had no choices. I feel this is going to do something very similar here, right? There are people who do not have a lot of ability or opportunity to basically live very close to the, to the city of St. Albans, to the downtown.
Give me an example of that person.
Um, we, we have, here in, I, I think right now you have perfect opportu, you have, you have the hospital, for a better example, nurses there who are making, you know, median income, doctors making more than median income, Mylan, more than median income, they don't have a lot of opportunity, basically, if they want to rent a place that is going to, you know, their vision of a, a place that they live, a place that is newer, does not exist here. They're the ones that are actually living down in Chittenden County and driving up here, whereas I think you can, you can, you can flip that, and basically have it where now you're going to provide these people, because I've already had a discussion with the CEO of, of the hospital here, and there is a huge need to basically provide local housing for their employees, whereas right now, if they don't live here, they actually live somewhere else.
Local housing to live and own, or local housing to rent?
Well, this is an opportu, this is to rent, I mean, this, it's, it's, you have rental and you have ownership, right? And so, there is, I would argue that the ownership side is, that, that demand is being met far better than the rental side, because you do have new housing projects just south of town, Hartlet Weaver, Alan Hartlet, his sons, they're, they're building out, it's Bayview, I believe, I have children...
Harborview.
Harborview, right? So, there are houses to purchase there. Name me any rental housing new at market rate that has been created here of any substance in the last 10 years.
Glad you said, you said that, because that leads me to my second question. Sorry for the couple of tangents.
That's right.
What is your market rate, and how often does that change, or how will it be, how will it progress over the years?
My, my, my philosophy is, right? My, my, so I've done, before we even got to this point, right, so I actually went, since nothing, and this is, and I, I actually, I actually had an appraisal to the area, so I, I paid for that upfront to get an understanding of what is the market here, and the appraiser, who was Martin Appraisals, and they've done some work up here before, he, you know, Kevin said to me, he goes, one of the hard things with appraisals is there's nothing like this up here, so there is no, there is no market rate housing, nothing new has been built, and so they, you know, so, their opinion is that the market rate for here is... their opinion is that the market rate for here is, you know, we, we talked about, you guys, in the RFP, you talked about eighty to a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty percent median income. A hundred and twenty percent median income is above market rate even in Chittenden County. I mean, it, it is, it's too high, right? So, so really, the, the, the real market rate housing is really eighty to a hundred percent, roughly in that area. And so that, that is really, and, and that number is, just if you want to hear of numbers, numbers, one-bedroom, anywhere between sixteen to eighteen hundred dollars a month, heat and hot water included. A two-bedroom, anywhere between eighteen to twenty-two hundred dollars a month. Is, is, is a, is a two-bedroom, heat and hot water included. I believe in the low two thousands is what you're getting right across the street with the, one of the, probably the last new building that was built for market rate housing, which is right here on,
First and last.
What's that?
That was the first and last.
First and last. So, so I anticipate that the prices in this building, within, with the, now granted, without the, the involvement of the city, never even be able to come close to this. But because of the, the state financing that is gonna be available to this project, and the city's involvement with, with the cost of the land, and the infrastructure, and the, and the, the TIF area that was created there, then I anticipate that this project will be able to meet that. Two-bedrooms, the low two thousands. One-bedrooms, the seventeen to eighteen hundred.
And that changes how often? How often does that change? When will rents rise, I guess?
Rent will basically rise with inflation.
Every year?
What's that?
Every year, every other year?
Oh yeah, no, it's, it's pretty much on, it's, it's a yearly basis. It's a yearly basis. But I'm also, you're also, you know, I'm of the opinion that, you know, it's, you, you, you are going to basically, you know, I would always rather keep, and we've had some discussions about this, right? So I'm, I'm of the opinion that I'd rather, I'd rather keep my rents lower and keep the bill, obviously, you know, it's supply and demand, it's economics. So, but am I happy to keep, am I happy to keep my rents as low as possible so I keep the buildings full, and I, and I minimize turnover? Without question. Turnover costs money, right? So when people move out, you can spend thousands of dollars in a unit to basically repaint it and carpet and, and all of that to, to, and so that's expensive. So, the perfect, the perfect solution is you keep rents where you can keep the buildings full and the people happy, and they basically stay in that area. And then you eliminate a lot of the problems that you're alluding to about transient, right? So they're, they're here, but they're not really living here, they're not really working here, and it's, it's temporary. So you're, you're trying to avoid that. So you're trying to keep the area stable, which really benefits everybody. Benefits the community, benefits, you know, benefits the people living in the buildings, and, and benefits businesses then too, as well. And attract more businesses to the area.
Thank you for answering those questions.
I, I think there's one piece that you need to reinforce a little bit, and that is the heats included.
Yes, heat and hot water included.
I, I, I don't know, uh, my, my opinion is about a hundred a month, right? On average, if you were to,
Yeah.
If you were to pay for it yourself. So if you're at sixteen hundred, a hundred of it's going for any sage or that, however you want to look at it, but I think that's important to, to know as well, that it does include heat. Because a lot of your duplexes and whatnot, they're on their own usually.
Yes. Yeah, in, in, these larger multi-family buildings, typically heat and hot water is always included in rents, because it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a centralized system. Uh, there has been some changes going down, the energy code's changing all the time. That's another thing I, I don't want to get into, it's just, it's, you know, there's, there's a lot of things going on in Montpelier that completely are at, at, at odds with trying to create anything affordable. Because they're very much of the opinion that more is always better. And there is a, there is a diminishing return at, at some point, you know, where, where the cost of increased efficiency is really starting to outweigh the benefits, and it's always just gonna get passed on to, to, to the renter or the homeowner.
That's surprising to hear that on Montpelier.
Um, I, I imagine we sort of consider competitive to Burlington for people that might not want to pay a little extra to move up here versus the fuel to go back and forth. And HUD released Burlington as a two-bedroom around nineteen hundred thirty-six this year. Now, we're looped into that Burlington, South Burlington area. Do you think it's gonna be competitive enough to fill the building enough to not have those commuters at the low two thousands? Because that includes utility as well. Um, and utility-wise, my second half of the question, is it just heat, or is it electric?
No, they're gonna pay for their own, they pay their, all the units are separate meter. So they pay for their own.
Because the HUD assessment includes electric and heat, so that's why.
Well, it, it depends what, how you're reading it. So I don't know what numbers you're looking at, but I, I know on a median income for a two-bedroom, it's over two thousand dollars.
This was the HUD assessment for twenty twenty-five from the HUDuser.gov.
Are you looking, are you looking at eighty percent?
This is just a final F Y.
Yeah, typically what they end up publishing
Is the eighty percent.
Is the eighty percent.
So that's not the published version?
What happens if you go down and look, typically they'll publish the, they, they publish them all, but typically the hundred percent. The number he made, I think the number he's looking at, without me looking at it, but a lot of times, the number that you see, what they publish out of HUD is an eighty percent number, it's not a hundred percent number. So then all you're doing is taking that number, and if you just divide it, you know, you just do some math, and you can get to the hundred percent.
Yeah, it's eighty percent.
It's eighty percent.
When we first started this project on the council, when we first took a look at it, we took this project in thinking that we would free up some of the housing stock in the city for future buyers by having the people who didn't want to maintain their homes move into a, a facility like this. Now, what I'm hearing is that we are, we have to go back to our constituents and say, well, that's only part of it. The other part is, uh, we're gonna build this facility so that we can get an influx of other folks into the city to utilize whatever the city has to offer, uh, here, rather than, uh, having, keeping people outside of the city. So we're trying to, we're using this mechanism to bring people into the city rather than using it for our constituents to utilize for themselves. Because at, at these prices, and, and I, I bring this up because when I went out and get signatures, um, I had a couple of people say, "Why are, why are we doing this? There's no way I'm gonna leave my big house here, um, and go down there at two thousand dollars when I can be living here with no payment, no mortgage payment." Um, you know, my house was paid for. Uh, so maybe I've gotta pay a little more in heat, because it's not quite as tight as what, this new facility is gonna be. Um, and I have to pay someone to do the, the lawn and the driveway. But why would I want to leave my property and go in, and go here and take on a twenty-two hundred dollar a month expense, or two thousand dollar expense? I heard that from at least two people.
I'll, I'll throw, uh, directly in relates, so.
Not that I'm against it, I just want to make sure we're telling our folks.
So, I mean, so, so when I, when I, when I, and I, the building that I built down in Middlebury, and the situation down in Middlebury, I actually view very similar up here. So when we pervaded the building down in Middlebury, the DRB at the time basically said, "This is great, you're gonna have tons of people, tons of people that live out in, outside of the village in Addison County." And they're gonna, they're gonna come into the village. These were people that actually owned homes outside of the village. And they decided that, yeah, I owned my home, I own my home, I got whatever, three, four, five, six, whatever, however much it was. They sold their house and put the money in the bank, and then they moved into the, moved closer into the village, and they were more, and these are, these were, these were, I don't want to say literally people, but they were, you know, later in life, completely independent, and decided, you know what, I'm gonna take the five hundred grand, and I'm gonna go put it in the bank. And yeah, I might have to pay two thousand or nineteen or eighteen hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom. But I got no hassle, my money's in the bank, it's making a return, and I'm gonna move into an area that's walkable, very close to basically wherever the shops are, restaurants downtown. And it was a life choice. And it, and they, they, and I was shocked. And so basically, I have a forty-unit building in Middlebury, half of that building is still the people that, they, they moved in five years ago, they haven't left. And, and they were just that situation, where they didn't have to, but it was a conscious choice. And they basically had money in the bank, or they sold their house, and that's it. And then, so.
I think two things come into play with that. One is the inability to keep up the house, right? That's, that's number one. The other one is, uh, the way taxes are going, the inability to maintain or to cover those taxes. I don't think any of us in the room really know who's gonna move in, right? It's gonna be, uh, hopefully it's gonna be a combination of all of those.
Agreed, yeah.
But we're not gonna know until we know. But I, I think it's, it gives residents, county residents, that opportunity. I think there are a lot of people in Berkshire, or Ennisburg, or Sheldon that, uh, wanna be closer to the hospital, wanna be closer to, to shopping and whatnot. So it'll be interesting to see what, uh, you know, to have you back and, and give an overview of who you do have.
Yeah, I, I think it's gonna be diverse, I really do, just from what I've seen. And like I said, I really do feel that that model down there is very similar to what we possibly can see here. Uh, because you have, you know, you have, port a point out, you have, you have similar-sized hospital down there, right? You have similar, basically, you know, you have, do have some businesses and industry in Middlebury similar to what you have here. You do have, once you get outside of Middlebury, Addison County is very similar up here, very rural, right? So there's, there's, there's a lot of farmland, there's a lot of agriculture. So that's very, very similar as well. So I honestly think it's, it's, you're gonna see a lot of similarities with the construction of this building and the people who, who occupy it. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a variation, which is great, of ages and desires and needs.
Yeah, I, I think to my, I was kind of saying the same point, it's like the, I, I'm about fifteen hundred a month with utility, with the heat
Yeah.
and, and mortgage, so for, I was agreeing with like, what kind of people would be moving out, what, you know, demographic would be moving in, uh, would be the big piece, and that's what I was pointing out. I think Middlebury does have more to promote than we don't, large campus. Wish our students moving off campus that we rent those spaces, and that's why.
No, I don't, I don't have a single, no, because actually Middlebury is, uh, they, basically, it's almost a hundred percent of their housing's on campus.
Good to know.
They have a, uh, they have an agreement signed with the town that, that it's, it's almost a hu, they, there's almost no student living off campus.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What, what is exciting for me is just even seeing the, the improvements that we've made, like currently, right now, at where it is. And, and I drive by that every day, and it's like, I can just see the vision of these two buildings there, and then the other one kind of behind it, with the, with the traffic lights, the new road, the signals, the whole bit. I think it's gonna be beautiful. It's really sharp-looking. I noticed that they have streetlights like we have on Main Street. Really is classy-looking. And I think, you know, if this was just a, I, I mean, over what it was, when we look at the, the previous pictures, and to what it's going to come to look like in the future, I'm, I'm really excited about it, and I, I hope everything works out the way we all hope it does. But, um, I, I just think it's, it's beautiful. I think it's, it's just such a, a great transition of that property, that lighting property.
Marie drives by every day on her motorcycle?
Yeah, no, my bicycle.
Oh, your bicycle?
Electric one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just a quick one, um, I don't know, maybe I'm a little bit different, but I'm really hoping that this brings in new money into the town. Like, I want to see professionals come up from Chittenden County that want to live in St. Albans. But my question is, we've had some issues, um, with some of the buildings that do have more subsidized units. Maybe the property management isn't quite there, or quite as strict. What's your style of property management to keep this building ten years? A place a doctor wants to live in, or a lawyer, or have it be a building that's not having complaints? You know, having called neighbors, like, what do you do with your other buildings to keep it a place where we, client people want us to live?
Yeah, it, it's constant upkeep. I mean, that's, I mean, I, you know, I, and, and when you have a, you know, um, you, yeah, it, it's constant upkeep, it's just diligence. It's, you're always, you're, you know, if you are, if you're looking to attract, you know, it, it kind of, it, it comes full circle to some extent. So, so you, if you want to attract the people that you're alluding to, like the, in which we want to, right? So you have the hospital, and you have some of the industry and stuff that's here, and people are paying, you know, two thousand, eighteen hundred for one bedroom, nineteen, two thousand, twenty-two hundred for a two-bedroom. So tho, the expectations of those people is that, yeah, living in a nice building, it's secure, it's, it's a, it's a community, um, for sure. And so therefore, it just, it's, it's just, it's, you constantly have to be involved with every property that you own. And that's, and that's just a matter, you have to correctly staff it, um, which is, which is what we do. And, um, you know, and, and, but it is, you are living, you alluded to, you know, I want to say problems, but, but it is a, it's a multi-story, high-density building. And when you have that, do you have problems? Yeah, of course you do. You have people that, you know, some people really should never be living in a situation like that, because they're always, they just, for whatever reasons, that just, they don't get along, or the building doesn't get along with them, or how are they, so that there's always a level of tolerance that everybody has to have. But as far as us maintaining the building, it's a, it's a twenty-four-seven investment. And, you know, I'm involved here, and I'm invested in it, and it's a building that, that you have to maintain. It's an asset that I plan on owning for, for a long time. That's how I get involved with these. And so, you know, I don't want to own an asset ten years from now that looks like it's ten years old, just, or twenty years old, just doesn't do anybody good.
Thank you.
As I say, Brett, just because you have a job, doesn't mean you have social skills.
Really glad you came.
Thank you very much. No, I'm, I'm very, very excited about this, and, and, um, you know, I, I hope you guys, basically want to make a commitment here, and, and plan on having it look like the pretty pictures we presented.
Thank you.
Uh, so we have, uh, we decided on a motion to approve the purchase, sale, and development agreement. So Dom can execute it and move forward if that's our choice.
We made a motion that, uh, we authorized the purchase, sale, and development agreement for the market rate housing units at fifteen lower than.
I second.
Motion from Tim, seconded by Marie. Um, any further questions of Dom or Brett? Here and gone, all over the favors, say hi.
Hi.
Dom, you have any closing comments?
No.
I'm, I'm gonna jump in and say anything worthwhile.
I always tell the staff, when you get to yes, stop talking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in, nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you guys, and, yeah, I'm sure we'll see you all again.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Be careful. Alright, that's, uh,
Thanks, all good.
Great. I think we are inviting Mr. Sawyer up.
I'm glad I could play such an important role. Your insurance.
Well, we're moving to item number five, which is planning and development items. The first one is, uh, updates of traffic ordinances. We have with us Mr. Chip Sawyer. Development, planning and development.
Thanks, everyone. We, uh, we've looked at the ordinances to clean up a couple of things that the, um, one thing the council noticed a while back about the Ferris and Lincoln stop sign, and then I needed to add our new federal and lower noon street traffic signal to the list, and so on and so forth. So, um, prepared a little package of some updates and corrections, uh, for our first reading tonight. The first one is to, um, change the name of what used to be Ferris Street on this side of BFA, which we named School Street. That's the, uh, section one amendment here. And then, um, section two is, we, the city actually has this really old version of traffic sig, traffic control signal rules, uh, including, uh, signals that show stop, the words stop and go, which I don't think signals have been known in quite a while in the state of Vermont. So I, I basically took the state's latest rules for traffic control signals and just pasted them into our ordinances and changed a couple contextual issues. But that's a good update for, um, how you interpret traffic signals in, in, uh, in our rules. Oftentimes, I think our police are, if they're writing a ticket based on traffic lights, they might be, they might be using their state authority and not always our local ordinance authority, but, um, I figured we should update that.
Can you allude to the benefit of having a local versus that's duplicated with state?
I figure if our ordinance is gonna have traffic signals mentioned. I figure if our ordinance is gonna have traffic signals mentioned in it, it should just show the more modern interpretation.
But we wouldn't just say refer to state guidelines?
I don't know.
I wasn't sure.
The thing, I think if we have it in the ordinances, probably should keep it there, but could update it. That's the approach. Now, I'm near the bottom of the second page, adding in the traffic light location at Federal Street, Lower Newton Streets. Section four, adding a little bit of clarification to our rule about the two places where you can't turn right on red. They're both at the top of Fairfield, uh, the top of Lake and the bottom of Fairfield. And then, we have, we, apparently we have a rule that you can't turn left onto Center Street from Main Street, but we haven't been enforcing that forever, and actually I think it would probably be bad if you couldn't turn left into Center Street from Main Street. So I got, I struck that out.
Okay, you make yourself.
And so that's, that's the first reading of those amendments.
I think my only real comment is, it would be to say this as a person that lives on Ferris Street. It's sad to see Ferris Street come off Main Street, but I guess it's a good thing, because people won't be just misdirected.
We had to, E nine one one won't let you have a street that's not contiguous, have the same name. So as soon as we let the VFA connector cross Ferris Street, we had to change the name of the bottom portion.
But it was closed well before that, I think, because they had that turnaround there for a while. Which I think the people that used to live on Ferris Street probably saw as a benefit, closing that off, less traffic until the school moved back and now has more traffic. Thank you.
Chip, I have a question too. I've been behind cars that have frequently turned, coming down Fairfield Street, and then stopped for the red light and turned right. That's not a right on red there, is it?
You're not supposed to.
No.
You're not supposed to turn right at the bottom of, sorry, you're not supposed to turn right at the bottom of Fairfield, or at the top of Lake, because you'll end up overloading that stockade that we have in between the streets?
Yes.
So we have signs, you know, I mean, obviously people are going to do it, but you're not supposed to do it.
I think I know, I did notice a sign there one day, but I've seen quite a few people do that.
Just to touch on that, I think someone pointed out to me, the sign is on a post, like, two spots back.
Yeah.
And the suggestion was to put it up by the lights.
Don't return, right? Don't return. I mean, state of Vermont, the red arrow literally means don't turn on red.
Right.
Maybe people forget that.
And actually, that's something that we added to our rules by copying the new state rules. We had nothing about red arrows in our.
Is there a red arrow at that light?
Yeah.
I forget.
I know, because I got pulled over by it, and I thought it was a solid.
Just about the.
Five years ago.
Put a, put a no care up on the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see it all over, and Will, Will Newsy has it too, people, there's a red arrow, and then people still, sorry, through the, so I think the sign for the. The, the crosshatching, is there anything else we can do about that? In the last month, I witnessed twice where those lights cycled all the way through, because people blocked both ends of that. They block both intersections. So like, they had to wait for other traffic, either backup or move out of the way to get by. It is like the second timer when he went.
Yeah, that happens all the time.
Yeah, it's become a problem.
Well, the city doesn't need to repaint the hatch, I think.
Do you need more signs? Because I know there's one of theirs that don't block, right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, book works, you look into, if there's space, for sure, yeah.
Or maybe a few days, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Any questions for Chip? So that's first reading. We'll have the second one in March. We'll move on to item number B, which is certification of street mileage. And as for every year, Chip, we want to give the overview of class one, two, and three.
Every year, we need to certify to the state the mileage of our certain classes of city, what you, what you call it, public highway. Because we get a block grant from the state based on the mileage of the different classes. So they need to know if we've made any changes, made anything shorter out of the street, that, so on and so forth. This year, for the first time in a while, I'm just able to put an X in that green square at the bottom, saying that there have been no changes, which is nice. But class one roads are the numbered state and federal routes that the city has taken over and manages and maintains, even though we still get some block money from the state to do it, which is great. So Route seven, a Route thirty-six, a Route thirty-eight, those are class one roads. Because except for the St. Alman's State Highway, the city has taken over all public streets in the city. Class two are those city streets that join two numbered roads, or that link one municipality to another municipality for through traffic. So High Street is a class two road. Comer Street, Upper Walden, they're class two roads. And then class three is everything else. Stoll Street, Cayman, those are class three streets.
And the state highway is the access road?
Yeah, must be.
I think we have a portion to park a lot of the schools, but I'm not sure if we could cross over there. But my workhouse is over there.
But yeah, just an annual certification, and this year it's that we have made, made no changes.
Motion to approve.
Want to put a conversation? The only comment I would make is, do we call the highway department now and remind them not to paint our class two road comes through?
I've already let their resident engineer know that they should take us out of their plans with the contractor. We, we everything we can to. Somehow they, that pink truck is.
They come out in the middle of the night.
Starts coming out on High Street, and then decides to do the entire city.
Do we coordinate, I can't remember, do we coordinate with the town for Upper Walden? Because I know that that was a mistake at one point, they did that section. But I saw, I thought I saw last year that the upper, upper section was painted and stopped in the city.
Well, it's the state.
As they say, but this town doesn't recognize that at all.
Well, the town probably tells them that they can paint it.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. I don't really know how that works. I don't know what the town tells them.
Do we have a motion in the second to approve this? Any further comments? Hearing done, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Thank you, Chip. We'll move on to item C, Judicial Bureau Officer Assignments for Zoning Enforcement.
For some zoning violations, it's, it's useful to be able to write a ticket, rather than do the official notice of violation and eventually, you know, bring a case to the environmental court, which is also a legal court. A ticket, on the other hand, is something you can mail to a property owner and immediately get their attention that there's something that they need to talk to us about. We haven't updated the Vermont Judicial Bureau on who our zoning enforcement officers are in quite a while, so this will be an update. And they also want us to just do a, basically a full-on re-informing them of what they call the city's department number two zero two eight is what they consider us for, uh, local ordinances like zoning, and also the stormwater management. It's not, not quite the same as the tickets that the police officers write, or the police department, that's a different number. But what we have here are two letters for the council to, to consider signing. One that basically lays out, you know, what's the email people should use, the phone number, the mailing address, physical address, people should use if they have questions about tickets. And then on the second letter, that Sarah Bennett should be the custodial official, issuing official, and appearing official, and that I will also be an issuing official and appearing official if Sarah's out and you need to write a ticket. And then the final sheet is something that Sarah prepares that basically reiterates who those officials are, and it goes off to the Judicial Bureau.
Any questions for Chip? Hearing done, entertaining motion to approve those.
Motion to approve the Judicial Bureau officers as presented.
I'll second.
Motion from Tim, seconded by Marie. Any other questions for Chip? Hearing done, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Motion oppose? Motion passes. Moving on to item number five D, which is presentation of the annual TIP district report.
Another annual report, this is something Sarah works really hard on, and I kinda tag along and throw in some words. But the, you know, the state wants us to go through and make sure we're very clear on how property values have changed in our TIP district, how much increments we've collected, the debt that we currently have active that we're paying off, the projects that we've done, voter approved, and our TIP plan, and what the progress on those projects have been. And also, you might remember, we identify some private development that we assume is gonna happen, that we can demonstrate that that increment's going to exist and make the whole TIP district run. So we also update the Vermont Economic Progress Council on, on what we know about those particular private developments. And we are supposed to just demonstrate that we have presented this report to the city council, or we're happy to take any questions.
I had one. On the list of projects that have been completed or what you've got credits for? I think I've asked your question before, but fixing stuff, there are maintenance buildings. Is that outside of our TIP district? Because I didn't see it on here.
I think it is, but if it were in the TIP district, it's one of those properties that also exists, that, that they, they've been redeveloped, they're providing increment, and they're also part of the engine that keeps the TIP district running. But they're not one of the ones that we included in our, in our original TIP financial plan, and only those ones are the ones that we're, the state wants the update some of. Yeah, but there is, there's one thing near the beginning of the report where we can report on any other property that's out of major. So say this maintenance garage wasn't a TIP district, the year that it had been finished, we would have included it near the beginning of the report saying, oh, by the way, here's an example of a property that just produced a lot of income for the TIP.
Do you think it's in the TIP, or?
I don't think it's in the TIP.
But I, I'm not so sure it is.
TIP is closely aligned to the public improvements, because you have to show nexus between the public and the private, and you wanna have some areas outside of your TIP that may continue growth. Anyone have any questions for Chip or Sarah? No, I'll just say.
No.
I'll just say. It's just a sign.
Words, numbers. That's how we work together on this report.
So you don't need a discussion vote on this, this is just a presentation?
Yeah, Dom's just gonna sign and we present it to you.
What's next, Chip? No, since there's no questions for Chip, entertaining motion to approve.
Oh, this is. Yeah, you don't have to approve. It's a presentation. If anyone says D and V.
D and V, no, cancel that.
Does it say D and V?
Yeah. Five D.
I just, I just do what I go.
Me too, Tim.
We don't sign yet, right?
No, we don't, nothing. Five D, or five E?
This is the, I think this is the last one.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Alright, so five E, consideration of certification of grand list.
So our annual certification that no one has appealed or sued us concerning our grand list at this time. And this is the one for April first, twenty twenty-four. Last year's. Nice to hear, family.
Any questions for Chip? Hearing done, entertaining motion.
Motion certified, the program is. First one, twenty-four.
Motion is a second.
I'll second.
Thank you from, uh, motion from Eric, seconded by Marie. Any further questions or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
I'll be over here, motion passes.
Very successful.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chip, appreciate it. Moving on to item number six, which is the finance and administrative items with Sarah. First one is a financial report.
Good evening. I included in your packet a financial report showing our major funds, the general fund, water fund, wastewater fund, and stormwater fund as of the end of December, second quarter, fifty percent of the way through the year. As you've read in my memo, I'm pleased to report that everything is generally on track. It's nice to be able to come here and tell you that the plan we set in motion last year, when the voters approved the budget, and the council approved the enterprise fund budgets, is, is going along as planned. We have general fund revenues hitting fifty-four percent of budget halfway through the year, expenditures at fifty-five percent of budget. There's a slight timing difference there, the Hope and Park improvements, and want to account for that. We're sitting in a surplus position at the end of December. We have identified a couple of revenues in the dispatch budget that won't be coming in, but we are working to adjust spending accordingly. The real shining star in the general fund is the theater, as we discussed earlier tonight, and the parking program. The parking program revenues are hitting sixty-six percent of budget at the end of December, and expenditures are low at about forty percent of the budget. The parking systems upgrades, we'd originally budgeted one hundred thousand dollars to do all of that, and we've come in much lower than budgeted with the cost structure of park mobile and the permitting system. And we've been able to invest some of those unspent funds in improving the lighting in the garage, and other projects in the garage that we're very pleased about. Overall, the enterprise funds, the water fund is going well. We have forty-four percent on revenue and forty-four percent on expenses. As I noted in my memo, we are going to see our capital projects starving in the water fund in the next few months. We just had a kickoff meeting with the state of Vermont and our engineers for the water asset management plan. We expect the pump rehabs to happen in spring, and the turbidity meters and filter valves are planned for later this month. Wastewater, we're still struggling a little bit with sludge removal costs. We've almost hit a hundred percent of our budget on sludge removal through the end of December. We've paid out two hundred and eleven thousand dollars on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. We've met internally about what's driving this, what is happening, is it something that's gonna stop? It really seems like just costs everywhere in trucking and disposing of sludge have skyrocketed. So you should expect, when we talk about the enterprise fund budgets in the coming months, that this is a budget line item that will increase in the wastewater fund to better reflect, reflect the reality. We've been in discussion with other wastewater systems, specifically the Village of, or the city of Essex Junction, about how they're managing sludge and sludge removal costs, and they report the same issues that we're having. It's expensive to move it, and there are only a few people who do it. It's expensive to dispose of it, and there are only a few places to take it. Over on the stormwater side of things, our big expense this year is the Lema Drive project, which we haven't really started to incur any costs on in earnest, and so that's causing our percentage versus budget to be very low. But the administrative operations in the stormwater fund hour are chugging right along. Newell, I had to get a train reference in there for your last.
Make sure you hook him up, you know?
I'd be happy to take any questions you might have on this status of our books at the end of December.
I did have a question right there, but I, you've answered it, but I was confused with the last, the second last paragraph, talking about the sludge.
Okay.
I guess I took it that we were ahead two eleven K compared to the budget two fifty, but the budget of two fifty is for the whole year.
That's correct.
Not for, not for the six months up to that point.
That's correct. And that's what makes it a problem.
Where is our sludge?
New York, Franklin County, we, uh.
I can tell you a project we did for work, where we redged a backwash room. The sled went to just outside of the Quik City truck.
Yeah.
Significant cost.
You need to put that on farms.
For cow corn from Ennisburg, yeah. I saw a documentary on where they were actually, west, they were spreading it out, and it came to here, it's the temperature, but they were spreading out these large concrete slabs that dry out, and it's easy to process and transport.
Yeah.
It was drying out, and they were trying to make a heavy weight load.
I think that's the same here, on the reverse, but I think it can create drive.
Gotcha.
I think the farm spreading is being pushed back more and more.
With the old John Lott, right?
I'm aware of only one place left that's able to do it in the state of Vermont, even that is, is challenging, and that's the city of Essex Junction.
Minerals and everything else.
Yeah, and the.
PFAS.
PFAS is the. PFAS is the big one.
So where do we make up, where do we make up the money for?
Well, we lean into our reserves, once again, all else being equal, there's not, those budgets are very lean, operations are expensive, it costs a lot to run wastewater treatment facility.
I don't think it's linear, I don't think we're on track for 400, though.
Correct, I think it's, it's tapering off, was the message that we got when we sat internally and met. We had, had some issues with the centrifuge being down, and in '23 into '24, we had done an extra, like, extra reducing of the levels in the tanks, and so we had some additional costs then. I don't know the status of the centrifuge at the moment.
But we're keeping up, we're keeping up, keeping the levels of the tanks down.
We haul out about what we produce, so we are just right there.
I got a question, what do you do with that stuff when you take it out, they spread it out on the land or something?
They don't, that program is really no longer operational across the state.
So what do they do with it?
They haul it over to the landfill in Franklin County, New York.
So you said status of the centrifuge, is it status of being repaired or status of it currently?
I'm not sure the status currently, if it's current, if it's still down and being repaired, based on the bills I've seen recently, I would say it's up and running, but there is sometimes a lag, and so what happens when the centrifuge is down is we pay someone to bring a mobile centrifuge in to spin it or haul it out heavier, and all of that is added cost, it's added significant cost.
Yeah. Question, do they dry this stuff at all, do they?
The centrifuge does the best that it can to spin out all the water, and the water goes back through the treatment process.
Oh, okay.
But there's not a spread and dry like you were describing here.
Not here. But after, you're going to see probably New York after a while, their landfill will fill up, and then we got a problem.
Did it ruin your house?
Huh?
Did it ruin your house? That's a school.
You won't believe that, so maybe.
There'll always be somebody.
That would be a good fervor down here, wouldn't it?
There'll always be somebody in this business, this isn't a problem, it's unique, it's in office.
Do we call them up? We have a, we have a, we're ready for it to take a load, a load out, do we call somebody up, or do we budget it, at the beginning of the year, we tell somebody, okay, we want you to take all our sludge for this year, what's your price? Is that not what we do?
I don't know how we, how we get it, but there's, there's, there's really only one hauler, so that's, I mean, the best thing to do would be to introduce competition in the marketplace, right, but there's only one hauler that, that everybody's using.
And how do we contract with that person? You, you come when we want you?
They're, they generally have two trucks there a day to haul, haul out.
So it's not a fixed price for the year?
Right, it's demand based.
By the load, and we, and we let them know when we're ready.
Well, can we do it for, how do we budget for this?
Can we, can we contract us or...
Yeah.
Like, this is the price per ton for this year?
I mean, how would we budget, I mean, how do we, how do we budget for that? Well, whatever he says is going to take to haul it out in May, you can't budget that way.
We budget it based on, if you look at the trend, we budget it based on previous year's actuals, and we keep checking it out, there's only one hauler, right, so that, you know, we could, we could put it out to bid and say, we're not going to, you know, we're, see what happens, but...
Is it, what, do they like truck load?
We budgeted the full line item on a linear basis, based on our last five years average, and it got away from us the last few years.
And how many times do they haul it out of there?
They, the, when I approve the batch of invoices for the month, I usually approve 20 invoices, two trucks, they invoice by truck, there's two trucks a day, five days a week. Four or five days a week, they pull out, they haul out.
Is that every month?
Do we have a resident, I don't want to call him as an expert, but yes, it would be, that can speak to like what we're seeing for possible increases in, like, what's the cause, is it people putting more sanitary napkins on the toilet, or like, what, what, why is it that number of people increasing, because I don't think we've had that equate or taken out.
Why don't we schedule some time on the upcoming agenda when Marty's in the room, and we can figure out if you want to get part of that in the room.
Okay.
We're about out of Sarah and I's expertise.
Well, we did pretty well.
No, or...
Any other questions on, Sarah, comments? Good update, thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Everyone good with that?
Yep.
So we can move on to six B, consider adoption of ethics policy enforcement procedure. Remember, we had this last meeting, I had asked to table it, make sure Mr. Hawkins was here to share his thoughts, and I had some questions relative to enforcement, if there were some issues, and Sarah, have you, I think you'd send an email to everyone?
I just sent it to you, but I, if you happen to address those.
You want to recap?
Certainly, so we're revisiting this, recall that last summer, the state enacted Act 171, which implements a statewide municipal code of ethics, this supersedes any code of ethics that individual municipalities have in place. Oddly enough, side note, we found the 1966 Code of Ethics recently during some filing, that's the city's, if anyone would like to peruse that artifact. The statewide municipal code of ethics went into effect on January 1st, our municipalities are, are subject to it, so that is currently in effect. We have posted it on our website, we have come up with a form for individuals to file a complaint, we have posted our whistleblower protections, and I informed you all of the training requirement that has to be done by September for sitting board members. Your question, Tim, had been, well, what happens if somebody who's required to do the training refuses to take it? And I relayed that to the Ethics Commission, and they said, well, there's no, nothing in statute, there's no punishments or penalties.
Enforcement.
Yes, in the statute, but if that person refused to take it, and then there was an ethics complaint filed against them, that fact would likely come up in the review of the ethics complaint, however, the Ethics Commission has no jurisdiction over local complaints, so they would just suggest that we note it in the investigation of that complaint. That's where we stand right now.
And the council could consider that in their future reappointment with that person, or if it was eligible, depending on the structure of the board, could be caused to remove it. Or you could decide that you agree with the person and appoint, reappoint, give them an out of order.
I mean, my, my, it's just another state mandate with OT, right?
Don't disagree.
I mean, that's, that's what bothers me, it's no different than we're all supposed to compost and recycle, and if you don't, nothing ever happens.
Yeah.
So the last action in all of this is that we're required to adopt by ordinance or policy an investigation enforcement procedure, and so what I have put together for you is based on the BLCT model policy that they're suggesting meets all the criteria, it's been tailored to be specific for the city, and we are proposing that the council approve this as a policy to go in our policy manual. What this does is it identifies who can file a complaint, how will that complaint be filed, and speaks to the whistleblower protections. This is pretty straightforward, you have to use our form, you can find it on the website, you send it to the designated complaint recipient, unless you're complaining against the recipient, then you send it to Dominic, and that we will look into it in a timely fashion. This policy then goes into, if a complaint is legitimate, how will we enforce against the person who violated, and it speaks to potential enforcement actions against elected officers, appointed officers, or employees. The easiest is employees, employees fall under the personnel policy, goes to the city manager, appointed officers, the council could, I'm working from the back forward, but appointed officers suggest that the city council could choose to follow any of the same steps articulated for elected officers, or they could, the council could remove the appointed officer. And then the meat of the enforcement, or I think the, the part that actually says something other than just follow your existing policies, is that if there's a complaint against an elected officer that has been substantiated, there are four steps that the board could take to reprimand that person. So the mayor could meet informally with the offender privately to discuss what's happened, the city council could meet as a whole to discuss the conduct of the officer, you could use executive session for this, you could admonish the offending officer in private, you could admonish the offending officer in open meeting and record it in the minutes, or you could by a majority vote request, but not order, that the offending officer resigns. So there's sort of escalation here, I guess, depending on the severity of the substantiated complaint. So that is the meat of the policy, it tells you how you can appeal, and that if actually this is not legal, it will be invalid. I'd be happy to take suggestions or comments on the, on the policy, I'm happy.
Sarah, my only one is, I, I don't think there should be an option to, to admonish an individual in open meeting.
Okay.
I don't know how it's any different than personnel.
This, they're suggesting here is that if you are, if an elected officer has violated the code of ethics, so maybe a member of a different quasi judicial board, possibly this board, they don't fall under the personnel policy, but I...
Well, I'm saying, how's it, how's it different than a personnel policy, I mean, why, why would it be different than a personnel policy? If you're elected representation, your constituents, they would be known.
Who's that?
Your constituents?
Yeah, no, give me a person, give me an example of who that person would be.
Well, as you mentioned, like someone in council who might be reprimanded with their constituents, be owed that knowledge of that, they were, you know, acting against ethics.
Do you think this includes the council?
I thought it does include.
I don't think it does.
It does include the council.
Any board, council, or commission, or any agency, authority, or instrument that eat under 15.3 definitions.
No, I, I don't, I don't know, not at all. I don't consider the, the council to be a part of this at all, not at all. Nope.
I'm curious what the cemetery commissioner would, I think he would be faced with.
I'm confused how it wouldn't be, that we're elected.
I don't think the mayor should be in there either.
So this is straight out of the statute, the legislative body of a municipality, the council, any member of a quasi judicial body, or any of these specific positions, including the mayor, who's already covered. Watch his message. Don't forget.
I thought, I think I read something, I saw something the other day, to see if I could remember what it said. We're silencing many intelligent individuals to appease a very few stupid individuals. I forgot who said that, it wasn't me, I'd like to say it, but I forgot who said that. But no, I don't consider this to be part, consider the council to be part of this. So if anyone thinks I'm going to do anything ethical, don't think I'm going to be sitting here in front of you, someone telling me what to do. Although I wouldn't do anything like that. But I just don't think that should be the case. And I'm wondering how the other municipalities, or, or good funding is.
Sarah, I'm just trying to find my way to yes here, I wonder if the council would consider approving it with, striking with A3 in section 15.5. So you wouldn't have procedural options to haul somebody in front of you. Or alternatively, you could change three to read the city council, and under two, you meet with them to discuss it. Tim, your reaction was, you didn't like the, I think the sameness of doing it in public, right?
What, what do we have on the books now? What, what's our policy?
It's funny you say that, we've had something virtually identical to this since 1968.
So why, why?
Sterling Morris was the manager back then.
So why, why can we not continue down that?
Because the legislature took that discretion away from us and said we have to do it their way.
And once again, if we don't do it the legislature's way, do we all get fired from this board?
Well, Sarah, have you researched what happens if the city doesn't enact it?
I, I have not specifically researched what happens if we don't adopt a policy on how we'll investigate and enforce complaints, my assumption, my informed assumption, is that it would be the same as what happens if there's refusal to take the training, and so there's nothing written into the statute to admonish us or, you know, reprimand us for not adopting this policy.
So what happens like now if, if I, you know, have a buddy on public works, and I say, hey, Jim, come over, pave my driveway, you know, stealing city resources, I'm an elected official, da-da-da, there's got to be some recourse on me, on the house.
That employee would be subject to progressive disciplinary actions in the personnel policy.
But if I use a selective...
Generally speaking, elected officers can do whatever they want, and the only enforcement mechanism is the ballot, and so the rest of the council can shine a light on it, but they can do whatever they want, and it's up to the voters to decide how much it bothers them.
I agree with that 100%.
And this doesn't change anything, all this says is it provides some guardrails about what's appropriate and what's not.
So there's no mechanism to get an elected official?
Not unless you enact a new charter. I mean, you, you know, the whole council, I mean, that's what section three is about, the whole council could shine a light on it, right?
But even with this, we can't kick them off, it's challenged, we can't kick them off.
All you can, you're, you're really talking to the voters.
Requested resignation.
You're saying to the voters, listen, we think this is a problem.
And that, then, that, would that lead to like a recall or something like that?
No, just the next election.
A recall petition, resignation, court action, or violation of city charter, any reason that a city council could be in Vermont.
What was the first one?
Uh, recall petition, resignation, court action, or violation of city charter.
If you have recall and return.
Yeah.
Which we don't.
Those are for different things.
So basically, the state just wants us to enact this T plus thing that basically doesn't do anything different than what we do now?
Because they wants us to explicitly express the expectations, and then if somebody falls outside of those, disqualified.
For our procedure for...
Which has to get...
I guess, I mean, it's, it doesn't sound like there's any enforcement, and a lot of the mirrors where we do math, so I guess I don't have a real big problem with that. But we want to see how far we can push it.
One, let's, let's do a vote on it, see what happens.
Maintain a motion to, to approve the ethics policy enforcement procedure. My concerns, Sarah, this doesn't go through, you're going to be fired from your ethics enforcement position.
I know, and then I'll have to do the news. Sorry. You know what, I think Dom has a great point, we could strength the option to publicly admonish somebody, Tim Hawkins, you were not here last month when I recounted the council with tales from my kindergarten class in Florida, where the bad kids would go around and would stand up and say, shame, 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 and that has stuck with me, so it's certainly fine kicking that out.
I mean, if you want to kind of protect the open meeting, admonishing them, you could add, add to policies, in a state like what you do, you can, you have to call the bare minimum, right? Now, the next line that says a majority vote in a meeting, the city council or executive session, city council could vote with MASH, so you have to have a majority vote to do that, and that would prevent that from ever happening, and then we're meeting the bare minimum.
Could we table this, the next thing? Is that, is that okay?
Sure. Sure.
Are there additional questions you'd like me to research?
I'm gonna say anything.
Uh, I'll, I'll like to take a look at a couple of things that I certainly agree with you, Tim. I'd like to get that out of there.
So Tim, Tim, what can you do with you with any questions or anyone else for that matter? Anyone has any questions or concerns?
I'll move the table statewide municipal, municipal code of ethics.
I'll thank you.
A second from, or motion from Chad, second by Eric. I'll hold the favor say aye.
Aye.
And when the voters motion passes. Sarah, we only do it so we bring you back.
I'm happy to be here.
During the time you were born.
Thank you. We're moving on to the mayor's report.
Hard act?
Oh, hard act, sure. Get that one. We have before us, you all have a slate of proposed nominees for trustee positions with Hard Act. But before we get to that, you also have an agreement that was made between Hard Act and the city of St. Albans to just blaze it out for those who weren't around in twenty twelve, I believe it was, because of the overview. So, any questions on that?
The agreement, usually when we do appointments, we set up an interview committee, but essentially the Hard Act trustees, the Hard Act Board serves as the interview committee in this case.
Chad, do you have some questions on Hard Act?
Yeah, I guess I could do a couple. Exactly, how much does Hard Act owe the city?
We should, is Sarah still here?
What, she just left upstairs?
Hard Act came, the history here, I'll answer that question, but the history and the context is important. Hard Act began building the Great Green Lodge and got out over their skis. And they had three hundred thousand to build the lodge, three hundred, three fifty. And a gift from Jack Brown. And they came up with a seven hundred thousand dollar garage, seven hundred thousand dollar lodge. And their board approached the city and asked us to partner with them to finish it, to finance it, and put the city offices there, the rec offices there, and allow them to pay the load off through their fund rate. So they signed a promissory note for three fifty issue. And made some payments to it, maybe fifty thousand or so. But weren't able to make substantial progress towards paying that off. Leadership changed, some of the leaders had deaths in the family, and priorities shifted. And so settlement that the city worked out with the trustees roughly a year ago was under the agreement that the surcharge on everything that goes on up there, which goes to the Hard Act nonprofit. And the city said, you don't need to pay us off immediately, but we're going to use that surcharge to pay off this hill. And the board directors at the time said, great. And that's what we've been doing ever since.
What, what do we see, like, what's their role now that the city of St. Albans pretty much runs the hill?
Well, it's a fair point, Chad. You know, this is a non, you know, we've talked a lot about public private partnerships tonight, and this is another partnership. The Hard Act Board is primarily a fundraiser board. And so they have a golf tournament and everybody who shows up at the Hard Act Hill to ski and slide does so for free. And they do that because the board has been the fundraiser and they raised about forty, forty-five grand. And that covers the cost of operating the hill. So the partnership is they raise the money to operate the hill. We operate the ski portion, we operate the recreation area that includes the hill. They provide, you know, the sorts of volunteers. And so, you know, a lot of people that are putting in time up there aren't getting paid. But what's happened in the last couple of years, it's become kind of a showcase for greater St. Albans is the city has made pretty substantial investments in everything that's going on up there. So, you know, right now, the rec budget has about a two hundred thousand dollar reliance on the property taxes. A hundred, that's Hard Act.
I think they feel, I honestly, you know, my name's on this, you know, I've had an interest in Hard Act. We don't have that life. I think they feel that they have some sort of obligation of stewardship of the land for the people that donated the land, the families that donated pieces of land to that. It's, and I'm just asking because I feel like there's two different boards here doing, you know, kind of butt in heads a little bit. And I'm all for Hard Act Board, but I'd like to know kind of like how, I mean, if we want to build something, do we go through the Hard Act Board? We have to make sure that they're managing the land the way the family has gifted it or that, or do we do it on courtesy, anything?
You know, all that's true. It's not inconsistent with what I was saying. There's some tension there because they've had a leadership change. And when the folks who are getting the boards trying to be reconstituted, they've been very hands off since we began the partnership. But they've continued to raise the money to make the ski hill free. And when we make major policy decisions up there, we check in with them. Like, we didn't put the pool there without talking with them. And one of the things that survives in this agreement is there will always be a home for Sassa if Sassa wants to build a ring. So the site plan for the pool made sure that there was always a place for Sassa, you know, so.
I just wanted to get.
Like, having lifting from a staff operational perspective is a hundred percent on the side. They play an important role, but it's fundraising, the sorts of volunteers, and stewardship of the original trust that was created, you know. So if the city came forward and said, global warming has happens and we would like to put some condos up there, the Hard Act Board would be there as a defense against that.
Okay, I got it.
I'm not sure, Tim, you might know, I'm not sure how much fundraising they are doing. I don't, I don't know if, maybe they did the golf tournament. I don't know, is it Cal Cuddet?
The Cal Cuddet, I think the Cal Cuddet is the golf tournament, isn't it?
No, two different fundraisers.
Yeah, but don't they do the Cal Cuddet in conjunction with the golf tournament?
I think the Cal Cuddet stopped. It's mostly the golf tournament and I think it's some private philanthropic activity. You know, I mean, the FY twenty, you see the FY twenty-five actuals have us going to them and saying, this is what it's cost to run the hill. And the Hard Act trustees transfer the funds based on that presentation. And the FY twenty-six budget rolls that same premise through.
Is there any money in the trust that they, that they manage?
Yeah, yeah, there's.
That recurs every year?
Their funding sources are the principal and the trust and the interest off of it. The funds that they raise and the funds that they get from the surcharge and that the tension such as it is is that they would like the city to let them off the hook for the promissory note and allow them to receive the surcharge without the obligation to reimburse us.
Sound like a tough town soon.
That's the risk. That's, that's the deal.
Totally off subject, but this doesn't mention any tenement. This leads you to believe that Hard Act owns the ski hill?
Hard Act has no ownership.
But if it is a piece in here that they would relinquish ownership of a number of different things, including the land. I think, and I think you and I talked about it ten years ago, but I think this needs to be clarified, one off subject, but this needs to be clarified as to.
What are you holding up here, Bernie?
It's inside there, yeah. I'm going, you and I should sit down and talk about it because Aldis Hill still owns the ski hill. We leased it to Hard Act or, say, we, and we have, Aldis Hill has a board meeting tomorrow. I'll discuss that, but I'll get back to it.
Okay.
I don't think it's been addressed appropriately.
Okay. I mean, they, I believe they quitclaimed it and I don't think we did house search.
But it wasn't theirs to quitclaim.
Well, that's an interesting question.
Well, I'm going to leave. Can you quitclaim a long term lease?
I think the Aldis Hill trustees would have had to have, uh, there would have had to been some kind of court order or court allowance in order to dissolve that trust in order to get their rights up to that through any other entity. Just like we did when the school became public, did a Cypray action in Superior Court in order to relinquish the, the Bellas trust. And I think that the Aldis Hill trustees would have had to have done the same thing in order to relinquish their, their ownership interest in the hill. And so I agree with you. I, I've always thought that the city owned all that property up there. And Chad and I, I said that to you, Chad, right? And then I, I, this, that came up and I said, whoa, you know, and maybe you could, are you making with him?
Aldis Hill has a meeting tomorrow.
Is John, is still involved?
John is.
Yeah.
They asserted their rights to ninety-five acres. But ninety-five doesn't include Aldis Hill. It's Aldis Hill's the second hundred.
No, but when I say Aldis Hill relinquished just the ski slope, if you take from the, from the lodge up to the top of the hill, that's all we relinquished.
And that's all I think we're talking about here. What do you think, what?
No, I'm saying they, they lumped it in with the ninety-five acres. Saying it's theirs when in fact it is still, the ski hill is still Aldis Hill's.
Okay.
See what I'm saying? We, we gave them a ninety-nine year lease for the ski hill.
Well, wouldn't that then detract from the city and so the city?
Well, that's what I'm, what I'm.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, we did.
I think I quitclaimed, said whatever I had, yours.
But that wasn't Aldis Hill that signed that?
And yours, well, they've.
The lease.
And I think, Tim, you're saying, yeah, you only had it for the next ninety-nine years.
Can't move away something you don't necessarily.
Because I think there would have been something more than what happened out, back when we were doing all the construction, city hall, we were doing this deal on the stage in the, in there, I, that didn't happen. I don't think.
I don't, I don't want to say anymore, but you, I'll talk to Aldis Hill tomorrow.
We should check that out.
I think this problem is about eighty-five years away.
No, you're right. But I, I don't want to be called a court, but I'm. I'm a different.
I'd like to know the answer, I'd like to know the answer.
Yeah, my memory won't be looking at this today. So let's move on.
So the trustees, oh, that's, okay. I got you, where I'm being now, right?
So continue, you have, how many people there, nine, I believe? I guess, the only issue I got is with number four, the guy. That's the only one I got an issue with, but I can overlook him. most of them have been on the board, have been off, have been involved in some form, fashion, probably two thirds of them. I think a few that are new.
Do you think that was a conflict of interest, Chad? Is that what your thought, your thought was? Because they're going to be on something that seems to have its hands into it?
I think that given their role, as mostly fundraising role, I don't think it's an issue. And you get the Google.
Did I say the Spain from any votes?
Were you been moshing him or just?
No.
Tell the table that.
I was just wondering, I was just wondering if I was bringing ethics complaint against you.
I just heard you can't kick me off.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the members of the Hard Act Board of Trustees submitted by, uh, submitted to the city.
I'll second that. I have a motion, a second, are there any comments? I don't know what I'm saying. I would just say extend a thank you to all of them for stepping up and willing to serve on the board. That's always not the case nowadays, so, and it can be time consuming for sure. So there's a motion on the floor by Tim, seconded by Eric, right? Is that what it is? So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chad, Chad confusing himself. And the motion passes?
Ashley, I'm sorry, I'm on the other board.
I'm good, Chad, bud.
All right, mayor's report. We have a card here for Mr. Noel Decker. Pass that on to him. Noel, we thank you for your years, you're not running again, as you have announced. Trudy, we thank Trudy for baking you cookies.
See, whether you want that or not.
And, and the council as well, she gave us half of that, so. But thank you, Noel. Appreciate the time you put in and you committed.
Well, still you use a John Deere, you know, you can break that, you can use it.
And if anyone needs a train ride, right?
Yeah. Fix it right up.
Is that legal?
Was that policy?
And Noel, I have a little personal gift for you, seeing as I sat beside you during this. Do you want to open it, can?
I think Marie wants it open.
Oh, that's not easy, goodbye, you said, that's really good, huh? You must, you must, oh, it's a holy angel, you do.
I'm sorry, you could, you could read that after.
No, it's been, it's been interesting. And I was going to tell you, I thought of something on Lincoln and it was, oh, Jesus, I had a pair of glasses too.
Marie, you want to give the explanation on that?
Yeah, yeah, just, for whatever rail you take after this train ride. Diesel help you through your next journey.
Wow. What I was going to mention to you, I was thinking about tonight, it was Abraham Lincoln, they asked him how you like to be president. He said, it made me think of the guy who was tired and feathered, rode out on the rail. Somebody, the crowd says, how do you like it? If it wasn't for the R, I wouldn't have done it.
Now, your, your card here.
Yeah.
Where you did it?
Right here.
Oh, no, the other card.
Oh, the other card.
I'll do it, I'll give it to you.
No, no, no. So Marie gave Noel reading glasses and a pen because she always gets ill prepared.
This was made with, and that's something that most of you guys won't remember, a typewriter.
Oh, yeah.
It's all made, you can pass it around if you want. It's all letters and stuff that somebody created this picture with. It was something that my dad had, and so I just copied the picture and, yeah. So it's kind, it's kind of a cool little thing, so.
When I was mentioning to the young lady, hook them up, that was your reversal, I were on a locomotive, steam engine.
Don't pass it around.
Well, Noel, I guess he conducted yourself.
I was all, I was all.
That's awesome.
And with a good heart. This is a slider for the engineer.
It's all made with letters from a typewriter.
Really?
Yeah.
Not needlepoint?
Yeah, no.
All right, thank you, Noel, appreciate your work. A couple of things I had, quickly, Sally and your team did a great job on the father's, or mother's son and father daughter dances. Two hundred and ninety people at the father daughter dance, quite the crowd. People seem to enjoy us. And I know Marty's not here, I don't imagine our public works budget is doing well. I don't imagine our public works budget is doing well for every one inch we get. It's a lot about plow and salt and overtime, so I don't know where we stand, but I commend the whole team for good job on the sidewalks and the roads and keeping them clear. Because I think we have war coming this weekend. So they've been very diligent, done a nice job with it. So thank you to Marty and all of the public workers for their work. So Eric, I'll start with you.
Just got to say, I've never seen the sidewalks clear across the road from me as quickly as it happened this year. It's impressive, really impressive. The new stop signs that I said before are still really kind of... People get used to it, but it's been great. Someone off of, and I wasn't sure where to bring it, but someone off of High Street, Fairfield Street, that about nine forty-five, ten o'clock at night, and I got in from a couple neighbors, including my apartment, but also a couple neighbors, loud pipes crank up Fairfield Street. I'm not sure if PE could spend some time around there. Everything consistently and loud for a while, too. And then... My Mac should have lost an half.
I was, came very close, tempted to call the police as well for... There was a car at the lights on late playing very loud, annoying music that I thought it was worthy of a noise call, yeah. I held off, but to Aaron's point...
What time and, like, what type, was it a weekend or what time of day?
This was, I think it was Saturday, midday.
Midday. All right, they died off, so...
Big day, but it was very annoying. Tim?
Nothing for Board One that I haven't said that is yet at the last meeting. But I know a couple of meetings ago, I brought up the fact of the smoke shops, the CBD shops on Main Street. Well, I want businesses to be able to run their business and make money. But to me, there's just a place for that, and I just don't know if it's on Main Street. And I know it's too late now for us to do something, but, I mean, now we've got National Walden, that's advertising, and we've got the smoke shop. I guess clients that do that, but they're in the town in places that are appropriate for that kind of stuff. But I'm just concerned that the window advertising, what you see in the windows when you walk by, and I walked directly by that smoke shop this morning, out by Leek Street, and I don't know if that's the face we want to look over. And we were going, Chip was going to look into that, I think. A couple of meetings ago, I brought that up, whether or not there should be something preventing that. Remember when we did Good Stuff down here on the corner? They were far enough out, it was the industrial district then, I don't know if it still is. And we allowed that there. So I don't know. I threw it out to the council, Chip was going to look into it, and I didn't hear anything. Walking by there, just brought that to my mind again. I know that's not my ward, but...
To follow up on that, I did get a complaint from an individual who saw a Tenscreeder coming out. I don't know if there's... Is there age restrictions on buying any of that?
Depends on what they're buying.
But they can buy... But can they buy a bomb?
I don't know.
I think it's tobacco, it's accessory, and I don't think you can buy until you're 21, man. Used to be eighteen.
When can you buy cigarettes? When can you buy cigarettes?
Twenty-one now.
That's twenty-one, too.
What about CBD, you mean?
All that's twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Cigarettes for a couple of years, man.
You know, what's the apparatus?
I think it's alternative. Because I don't know, it doesn't look like us.
A hundred percent we get it. Chip's got some thoughts, and we should...
We'll put that on the mark sheet. The planning commission is looking at defining smoke shops and vape shops in the zoning and then restricting what zones they can be in. And much like Tim says, pushing them further out. It would be in the batch of zoning changes that we're preparing.
Chip, let's talk and see if we might be able to run the hurry-up law fence on that one.
Yep. It's all active. Except Noel, final comments?
I mentioned the last time we met here, I hope to put these photos up on the wall of what made the rain, what made the city. I would like to see that in the future. And it's been a wonderful time working with everybody. I've enjoyed it.
I think in our discussion, we were thinking a lot about law, possibly.
Yeah, yeah.
If it works.
Because, I mean, help your grandfather out when he had his restaurant there, so he was saying, help us out.
If you can get those up at least for one more month, and then when you're old again, we can take you down.
Yeah, take you down.
Marie?
War three's been pretty quiet, as far as I know. I haven't gotten any comments or complaints, so that is a good thing. Again, kudos to the city for keeping everything all nice and clean, cleaning it up really fast. And I do, just for the record, have concerns about what we, what you brought up to about the smoke shop. Bad taste, as far as I'm concerned.
She's been going there, too, you know.
Noel, you weren't supposed to count. So that's all I have to report.
Is your neighborhood lot still happening?
It is, we haven't met, but yeah, we've got it. It's hard in the winter time.
Chad?
Yeah, I'd like to say the father-daughter and the mother-son dance were as big as ever, especially with the weather. A lot of people backed out, but the wait was so long that those spots got filled back in. I've been a part of that for a long time, so it's crazy to see how much is gone. And the other little thing, I think Tim and I got an email this weekend. The flag was still, was flying at half-staff. I think that should have been raised on the twenty-eighth. We probably have to make sure that those events happen. Kind of got to get on that a little bit better.
Put it up now, I have a number.
Yeah, put it up. There's no lock. I just...
You're charging the one out front, right?
No, the park.
You did that?
Yeah, I just chucked it out. I was walking the dogs, I checked.
I put them up on my shoulders. So we should, we should have some type of security on that. Yeah. And that's a pride of...
At least it's been a bill of the city.
Can I have one more thing, Tim?
Not my ward, but concerning all of us. You know how the cars come into the park on Church Street? I had taken some pictures this fall when I was walking through the park. Come in, and they did the same thing where they put Christmas tree up. And it really rips that, rips that stuff up. And I'm wondering if we should just pave that in one area where they, where they come in, just pave that so they can come in and down into the park.
That corner, right, between the walkways?
Yeah. And it's, it really gets ripped up. I don't know how that can ever go back, but because we got the Maple Festival, the car show, the farmer's market. I don't know how much they're, they're damaging that, but the Christmas decorations and... Maybe, you know, instead of having it put up and being rutted and all ripped up, we just, at one point in time when we're paving something, well, there's a hole, like a, you know, like a stretch like this, and just pave it, and so they can just drive right down and then into the park and down rentals, one of the walkways.
I know, I know Public Works is trying something. I think it may have been laid in the fall, but they put mats down in that section and put a small layer of topsoil, so they were programmed. So if a car drives over and it's wet, the matting is going to prevent the rust. So whether that, whether it works or not, I don't know. But I know that Marty and his team spent some time on that, putting a... I think there's some mats left over from the water tank, and they put that in there. So let's see how that will go up, and then we'll still be able to adapt if we need to pave it.
I don't know if it's the same stuff as the mats, but there's this new six-inch hexagonal technology that they can put down, that they put stone, and then dirt, the grass grows, but prevents any of it from moving.
The mats are...
Is that similar to that or something?
All right, let's move on to motion to accept the minutes.
Motion second.
Motion second. Any adjustments, amendments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Motion for minutes one twenty-eight, twenty-five. Special need, second.
Motion second to approve the warrants.
No, the one twenty-eight.
Oh, the one twenty-eight, sorry.
One twenty-eight.
Any changes, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we move to warrants.
Motion for warrants, one thirty, one twenty-five.
Motion to approve by Tim, second by Eric. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we would empty the motion, go into executive session. We own that here or upstairs? Upstairs, yes.
I move that we move to executive session per considered motion for egregious clauses related to contract personnel. We're covering the city of persons involved, and we're going to go through the street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who's invited? The city manager?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now we move on to B.
Move the executive session per considered motion to enter executive session with purpose of discussing contract negotiations and personnel matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Marie, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all. We'll move to the executive session.